Good evening, thank you for your confidence. Good evening councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, we've already had your attention drawn to the fire regulations. Can you please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent and speak directly into the microphone if required. Members of the public, welcome to Waverley's Eastern Planning Committee, thank you for taking an interest in the planning process. We do understand that some things can be a bit emotive but if you can just be respectful of the other members in the public gallery and the committee, that would be appreciated. Thank you. So, we move on to the items of business. The first one that I have to deal with is to confirm the appointment of councillor Maurice Byham for the council year 2017/2018, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Not at all, no, now I have to stick to my script, you know that. Right, members, the item three on the agenda, the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 5th of April 2017, have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes, are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Amy, have there been any apologies for absence?
Thank you chairman, apologies from councillor Band, councillor Foragevsky and councillor Jeanette Denett and Stuart Denett.
Thank you. Have any members declared any interests before the meeting?
None before the meeting chairman.
Thank you. Do any members have any non-procurnary or disclosable procurnary interest to declare? Councillor Gray.
Thank you chairman, just that I'm on the Dunfall Parish Council and we're talking about the applications in respect of Blackness cottages.
Thank you, that's noted. Oh, sorry councillor Townsend.
I'd just like to confirm that I'm a member of Cranley Parish Council Planning Committee.
Thank you. Now, Amy, have there been any questions received from members of the public?
Thank you chairman, none received.
Very good. Peter, I understand you've got some updates to government guidance or legislation that you'd like to make us aware of.
Yes, thank you chairman, I've got free matters to update the committee on. The first relates to the Neighbourhood Planning Act. Members may recall that I've previously provided an update to the committee on the Neighbourhood Planning Bill. This has now received royal assent and now comprises the Neighbourhood Planning Act 2017. The first part of the act largely deals with the processing of neighbourhood plans, however there are three sections which directly impact on development control and decision-making. Section fourteen will introduce restrictions on the imposition of planning conditions, which will, and this will require agreement from the applicant prior to the council applying any pre-commencement conditions. So that will impact when we're considering applications at the committee, if there's additional conditions, members might feel appropriate which require pre-commencement wording, so prior to development taking place, so a certain type of material or detail has to be submitted, we need agreement from the applicants if we're going to take those forward. So what our advice to be, if members are considering that ahead of committee, advise officers and we can seek and sound out advice on that if the committee are minded to do it, so we don't have to go back and forward on that point. At this stage, a commencement order is awaited for this to come into place and this is likely now to be after the general election for obvious reasons, because that needs to go through appropriate process. Section fifteen of the act requires the Secretary of State to amend the General Permit to Development Order to restrict permitted development rights applying to pubs and wine bars, drinking establishments, but only if they actually fall within use class A4. It's important to note that a number of drinking establishments actually fall under use class A3 rather than A4, due to the service of food being a significant part of the business and therefore would not be caught by the proposed change, so it specifically relates to the A4 use. DCLG have already amended the General Permit to Development Order and the permitted development restrictions or changes to use classes A4 will come into force as of the 23rd of May 2017, so that's just something to be aware of. And the last provision is just, it's less to do with decision-making but it's just, it relates to what we're required to keep on the planning register and that really relates to prior approval applications and we actually already do that anyway, so there's no change from our point there, but the act actually brings it in as a requirement. The next point to update you on is the EIA regulations. The regulations for environmental impact assessment have been revised under the Town and Country Planning EIA Regulations 2017 and come into effect as of the sixteenth, or as of the sixteenth of May. The main difference introduced under the regulations are, relate to validation requirements for screening opinions. There's more flexibility now during screening, so deciding whether a scheme comprises EIA development, to take into account mitigation and that allows you to screen out more development from EIA, or what may have been EIA development previously. It sets out a scope and a requirement for a scoping opinion for EIA and says that is now compulsory and both the screening and scoping opinion must be completed and submitted by a competent person. It doesn't give the specific guidance on that, but the MPPF does give you some guidance around that and that's appropriate person that's qualified in that field to provide advice on that grounds. There's introduction of additional items under EIA and that is including population and human health and risk from accident and disaster from future development and there's specification on what information should be put into a decision notice and additionally, this is implication for us, is monitoring of conditions on EIA development as well. So there's now four stages of the EIA process, which is a screening, initial stage, scoping which sets out what will be required in an environmental statement, the handling of the environmental statements and the additional point on there of the monitoring of conditions. Appreciate there's a lot of information there and I will circulate the link to those regulations and the summary, but it's just useful to be aware of. And the last point is, relates to housing land supply. The council's housing land supply assessment has been updated with a base date of the first of April 2017. The updated assessment demonstrates that we are now able to demonstrate an adequate supply against need when applying a five percent buffer. This has been deemed appropriate by the local plan inspector and is considered to override previous inspectors' decisions on recent appeal decisions where it states that we should have applied a twenty percent buffer, so that's helpful from our point of view, it provides clarification on that point. Accordingly, this is a material consideration into determining planning applications for housing, however I would add that it does not change the conclusions on any of the applications before the committee this evening, however you will see us referring to that in the future and wait that impacts on policy provision. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I will follow that up with a written response. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Peter, as you said, a lot of information to be taken in there. Peter has indicated that if anybody wants to chat to him tomorrow or outside the meeting, he'd be pleased to answer any queries, but if anybody's got any immediate questions they'd like to ask him, councillor Gray.
Just in relationship to tonight, the changes in terms of conditions, that doesn't apply yet.
Thank you chairman, no, that's correct, we're waiting for the commencement order. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the first item for deliberation this evening, objection to tree preservation order, this is an objection to tree preservation order number 012017, trees on land between Allfold Road and Noel Lane Cranley. Andy, would you like to introduce the report for the committee please?
It's not Andy, is it?
Steve, sorry.
Thank you chairman, that's okay. Andy's on annual leave at the moment, so I'll be running this one. On the 10th of February this year, TPO 012017 was placed on trees between Allfold Road and Noel Lane in Cranley. The order was placed to allow the council to exercise a level of control over the development and safeguard them against potential harm, both current and in the future. The order has also been made in recognition of the contribution the trees have to the visual amenity and character of the area. An objection however has been received by, from Mr Max Galton, the development manager for Berkeley Homes, who is the main developer connected to this site. It is appropriate to mention at this point, we did receive support for the placing of the TPO from the Cranley Civic Society. Mr Galton's objection raises four main points, in particular these are, the tree preservation order is unnecessary as the LPA control reserved matters and therefore the trees are not under threat. The TPO puts significant barriers in the way of delivering development, the tree work applications will cause unnecessary delay in the scheme of delivery and the trees and woodlands on-site may require works within the minimum routing zones for access roads, footpaths and plot boundaries. Before I move on to address all these points, I'll address the last point just raised there. The officers consider that very few trees internally located on the site may require further removal to facilitate the phases of development on-site. Furthermore, if boundary fencing is installed appropriately, it is considered that there will be very limited impact upon the tree stock. The majority of trees, tree issues were already addressed in the Arboretural Impact Assessment which made part of the outline application for the whole site in 2014, I believe it was. This included the foreseeable implications of changes in ground surfacing in relation to the proximity to the trees and the rooting areas. I'll just move on and show you some, so that over, this aerial oversight indicates the tree stock which is protected by the order. These are photos I've taken showing the southern boundary from Noel Park, showing the character of the trees within the context of the location. This is one of the internal shots across the central sector showing trees T13 to T21, group three within the southern boundary, the belt, trees on the south side of development which include woodland three and group six. And photo of two veteran oaks, T23 and T24, which are shown for retention as part of phase one. Oaks again, both internal on the site which are to be retained in phase one, which are T25 and T26 which are maturing oaks. A photo of group six and seven which is along the Noel Lane frontage of the site, which again is part of phase one development works. And photo of Noel Wood, the ancient woodland on-site taken from Allfold Road access, which shows that it's already had the clearance work which was allowed and the tree protection fencing on-site has been constructed. Going back to Mr Galton's points, a tree officer, Andy Clout, responded raising these or responding to the points raised and raised these. The Town and Country Planning Act places duty on the local planning authority to be expedient in placing orders on trees and woodlands of interest, this is interest in the terms of amenity. This is also in accordance with Waverley Tree Guidelines 2012. In this case, the development was granted outline permission for access at appeal, so it did not necessarily meet with officers' approval, however it was granted at appeal. It is envisaged that each reserve matter application submitted for the different phases of work will include assessment of impact on trees and it is therefore considered that the detailed construction requires review as the phases are accepted and progressed. Any tree works necessary for implementing planning permission of these phases are exempt of the requirement to make a separate tree work application and the costs associated tree work are not altered by the fact that they are placed under an order. In conclusion, it is the officers' view that the objection raised against the making of the tree preservation order 012017 are not substantiated and do not override the amenity value of the trees or woodlands on-site. It is therefore recommended to the committee that the order is confirmed without modification. I thank you for your time and I'll take any questions.
Thank you Steve. Members, do you have any questions or comments? That was painless? Oh no, sorry councillor Goodridge.
Well, I was just going to say, Mr Chairman, that these trees are very important in this part of Cranley and it seems to me it's sort of belt and braces, you know, the applicant says where it's not necessary, I think it's important to err on caution and that because they are such an important amenity, I'm very much in favour of what the officers are recommending.
Thank you, councillor Townsend, did you wish to speak?
I was just going to say that I support the officers, the trees have been there obviously all the time and it's important that Barclays will just have to work within the confines of the natural environment on that site and there is already a loss of the ancient woodland, so it's even more important that some of these trees are protected. Thank you chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you chairman, I totally echo the words of my two colleagues here. The applicants have got permission for development on the site, I won't comment on that, but they always knew that the trees were there. The trees have been there for a long, long time, developing, flourishing and growing and the people of Cranley are passionate about the trees and I'm very grateful to Waverley for having put the TPO on these trees to protect them, otherwise, I'm sorry to say, I suspect that they probably would already have disappeared. So I truly, truly hope that my colleagues here will support the officers' recommendations and refuse the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? So the recommendation is that the tree preservation order 012017, applying to trees and woodland on land between Allfold Road and Noel Lane Cranley be confirmed without modification, i.e. we're supporting the officers' recommendation. May I have those in favour please? Thank you members, that is agreed. Just a note here regarding site visits, in the event of any site inspections being necessary as a result of the consideration of the applications, these meetings will be, these site meetings will be held on Monday the 12th of June at a time to be agreed. Now we move on to the planning applications and the first is item A1, erection of a dwelling at land to the rear of 135 Horsham Road Cranley, GU68DZ. Tim, would you like to introduce the application to the committee please?
Thank you chairman. Members, the application site measures 0.12 hectares and is located to the north-east side of Horsham Road, currently comprises part of residential coverage of property known as Garthwaite, which is number 135 Horsham Road. The site's enclosed by the gardens of neighbouring properties, which consist of a range of dwelling sizes and varying scale and design. Existing property on the site is a bungalow, as are the properties immediately to the south-east. Properties to the rear and north-west are two-storey. This is the proposed block plan. The proposed position of the dwelling would be six metres from the north-west boundary, eight metres from the south-east boundary, twelve point five metres from the north-east boundary and eight metres from the south-west boundary. Just to clarify, this is the proposed dwelling here and access would be achieved via Horsham Road here, existing property is there. This is a slightly closer up version of the proposed site plan, access would be achieved down the side here of number 135, new boundary treatment created here dividing the plot with the proposed dwelling in here, it would have an integral double garage and turning area and that's would be laid to lawn. Let's see, proposed front elevation, design proposed would be of a chalet style bungalow design with first floor accommodation within the roof. External materials would be clay tiles for the roof and facing brick to the elevations. Let's see, proposed rear elevation, at the rear it would have ground floor glazed doors and three dormer windows which break the eaves level. These would also contain three sets of Juliet balcony doors. Let's see, proposed side, one of the side elevations proposed, as you can see here, just the hit roof and the sides of the dormer windows there, you can see. The dormer windows would have lead material to the side elevations. This is the other side, handed side elevation, you'll note in the foreground there, there's a flat roof adjoining double garage proposed. Let's see, proposed ground floor plan, you can see majority of standard accommodation proposed with the integral garage here, the fourth bedroom would be at ground floor level. Let's see, proposed first floor plan, all the three bedrooms at the top would have the rear outlook of the Juliet doors opening inwards with the front having two bathrooms and landing facing over the front of the site. Members will note in the agenda that there is planning history on this site, the current application follows a plan application which was dismissed on appeal last year, we have attached inspector's decision in the committee agenda for your reference as it's highly material consideration in determining this application. For reference, the current slide shows a previous site layout which was for two dwellings, which is here, next to the current layout for one dwelling. These are outlined on page 32 of the agenda along with key paragraphs drawn from the inspector's decision and the main differences between the proposals. The main changes are the reduction from two dwellings to one, reduction in length of the plot and distances to the side and rear boundaries has been increased. For reference as well, I've included just a snapshot of the, one of the properties proposed under the dismissed scheme at appeal, so there was two of these properties which are identical, proposed under the previous scheme, but it's just for reference, brings your Going through some site pictures, this is photograph on site looking back at the rear elevation of the existing bungalow on the site, so the access would be just off-screen here, coming up here, with the plot divided. This is looking towards neighbouring properties known as Pendrea and Helmsley. So the boundary here, the two properties beyond here, these were, the impact of the two dwellings proposed under the appeal scheme was objected to by the inspector on neighbouring amenity on these two. This is a photo on site looking at the existing screen at the back, the vegetation on site is to be removed, however we have included a landscaping scheme and there is additional addition to that within the update sheet as well. And this is the properties beyond the north-east of the site, known on Cromwell Place. You'll note the screening that I just showed you before, there is a slight gap at the moment between that screening and the boundary, so there's a couple of metres of laid grassland in between that, but you can just see if you reference the rear elevations of some of the dwellings in Cromwell Place. In terms of determining issues with this application, draw members' attention to the matters of judgment on the right-hand side. The site is within developed area of Cranley where in principle new residential development can be acceptable. Officers are asking members to exercise their judgement on matters of visual impact, impact residential amenity and impact on trees and landscape. The planning history is within the master judgment section as the appeal decision is highly material and a judgement has to be made as to whether the current proposal has overcome this previous decision. Having regard to this and its content and all other aspects of the proposal, officers satisfied the proposal can be supported. Just to turn members' attention now to the update sheet. As noted there, the applicant's proposed a further additional planting along the north-east boundary, with that in mind, officers are proposing in addition to condition ten to include and capture that, so that's to be controlled by condition. So the revised recommendation is that permission be granted subject to the amended condition ten and remaining conditions and informatics set out in the agenda. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Tim. Now this is a public speaking item and I believe the procedure has been explained to those of you that wish to speak, may I first invite the objector, Mr Warburton, to speak Good evening Mr Warburton, you have four minutes from when you begin speaking, you press the big button and the little red light will come on.
Ladies and gentlemen of the planning committee, I appear before you again today on behalf of twenty people who have registered objections to the application to build a large four-bedroom house on the land to the rear of 135 Horsham Road Cranley. A number of you were present at the Eastern Division Planning Committee meeting held in January 2016 when the previous application was heard. You will recall that a site visit was carried out the day before the meeting. The previous application was unanimously rejected by yourselves and the subsequent appeal dismissed by the planning inspector who cited two main issues. Those issues were A, the effect of the development on the character and appearance of the area, and what a day to get your two pages stuck together, and B, the effect of the development on the outlook and privacy of the occupiers of the surrounding houses. In connection with A, the inspector stated, "I conclude on this issue for the reasons identified above, the proposal will have a materially harmful effect on the character and appearance of the area. It would be contrary to save policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan." In connection with B, the inspector stated, "On the issue of outlook, I conclude that the proposed development would conflict with policies D1 and D4. It would be odds two with one of the core planning principles of the framework which seeks to secure a good standard of amenity for all existing and future occupants of the land." The planning officers pointed out that the committee needs to consider if the application overcomes the objections of the planning inspector. In connection with the effect on character and appearance, I note that the plot size of the proposed dwelling is approximately eighty percent of the combined plots of the two houses in the previous application and that includes the gap between the two properties. The property is misleadingly described as a chalet bungalow and it's my understanding a bungalow is a single-storey building with a possibility of some use of dormer. This property has a floor, first floor covering seventy-five percent of the size of the plot, providing three bedrooms, two bathrooms and a large landing. I'm unable to see how that can possibly be a bungalow. The proposed building has three bedrooms with Juliet balconies, full-length glass windows. The roof height appears higher and generally larger than the previous design. The overall bulk of the single building covering approximately eighty percent of the previous two houses is far more intimidating. The inspector stated that the previous proposed development was incongruent with the character of the housing to its south-west and north-east and it is clear from the plans that this proposed design is equally incongruent and contravenes save policies D1 and D4 and that its building would have a materially harmful effect on the character and appearance of the area. In connection with outlook and privacy, the inspector noted that "on the south-east side of the proposal are two houses with relatively short back gardens and the proposed development would significantly harm the outlook of the occupiers of Helmsley and Pendrea. There is no reduction in the size of the side elevation to the south-east, the significantly harmful effect to the occupiers of Helmsley and Pendrea, both of whom are elderly widows, is unchanged." In my view, this issue alone is sufficient to refuse the application. Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, I trust you agree that the current proposal in no way overcomes the objections of the planning inspector and that you will reject this application.
Thank you Mr Warburton. Now may I invite the parish council representative, councillor Burbridge, to speak please. You also have four minutes, thank you.
Members of Eastern Planning, once again we are looking at a back garden development on this site. Garthwaite is on a part of the Horsham Road that is prone to serious flooding. The drains along the road were blocked last week but then cleared by Surrey County Council. This week, they are blocked again. After a swimming pool was built at Garthwaite, the garden next door and other gardens were more prone to flooding. To construct the access road and clear part of the garden, many trees will have to be cut down. These trees remove water from the soil by the process of transpiration, I'm a science teacher. For example, a large For example, a large oak tree can remove up to forty thousand gallons of water a year. Trees are vital for this area of Cranly when floods are threatened in gardens in the locality. I walk the dog down the Horsham Road most mornings. I noticed this morning how in spite of not much heavy rain, the dishes have already started to fill up on the eastern side of the road. Horsham Road is often a very busy road. It is even busier now as a result of the Cress Nicholson development that we feel will go on for many more months or probably years. The bend in the road as Grove Road is approached is just after the thirty mile per hour sign, so to have yet another building site in the vicinity would be a potential hazard as lorries and trucks will have to enter the new access road once it's built. Even when construction is finished, it will be hard for delivery vans to access the new dwelling in the very narrow access road, and if the new house has many visitors, parking will be a problem. As councillors, I expect that you, like myself, are concerned about individuals, not just projects. I spent yesterday afternoon visiting homes that will be affected by this development and talking to the residents and looking first-hand at the effect it will have on their homes. I had downloaded the plans, but in real life, I came away with a much better picture of how upset these residents are by the plans before us this evening. The ladies in the bungalows now look out onto trees and grass and have done so for many years. One who is ninety-five years old said she will lose her privacy. She was distressed when I spoke to her because it had not registered that there was another development proposed for this site. The other lady showed me from her bedroom window how she will no longer have the peace and quiet she values, but she will see cars going along the narrow access road and see lights from the front of the house and from the cars. I was surprised to see how small the distance is too to the affected homes in Cromwell Place. I could see their roofs quite clearly from this lady's garden and how near the new house will be to the back gardens in Cromwell Place, which made me realise how badly they too will be affected, especially when yet more trees are fell during the process of building the house. Although I had studied the plans very carefully, seeing all this in real life gave me a very different picture of what is proposed. Building this one house will not make a difference, or not much difference, the housing needs of Cranly. Not building this house will make six of the owners living in the vicinity of the plot delighted that their homes and privacy will be protected. Like you, I care about these people who have elected us to care for them. The building of this one house will cause misery to many, so I plead with you all to reject these plans as you did in the previous application. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, councillor Burbridge. Now may I invite the supporter, Mr McLeod, to speak, please? Good evening, Mr McLeod. As you've heard, you have four minutes to speak, thank you. Could, could you press the, the big button on the microphone next to you so it switches that one off? That's it, thank you. Thanks very much.
Good evening. I would like to thank you, the Chair and fellow councillors, for allowing me to speak this evening. The officer's report has comprehensively covered the main points of our application, and in the interest of time, I will keep this as brief as possible. There are three key elements that have contributed to the positive recommendation put forward by the case officer. The location of the site in planning policy terms, the reduction in scale and impact from the previous application, as well as the considerations of the inspector on the previous appeal decision. The appeal site falls within the designation of the developed area of Cranly, as shown on the local plan proposals map. As such, the principle of residential development and intensification cannot be in question, and the relevant decision-maker must turn their attentions to considerations such as the visual impact and residential amenity of both existing neighbours and future occupants. The reduction in scale of, of the proposal from that dismissal at appeal from one dwelling to two has created greater boundary separation, less habitable windows to lessen any perceived loss of amenity, and the difference in orientation ensures that the proposed new dwelling would not be visible from the axes. As acknowledged on page twenty of the committee report, the current proposal has looked to overcome the concerns raised by the appeal inspector who, who dismissed the appeal for two houses. In addition to the points already mentioned, the depth of the rear garden of the donor property at one-three-five has been increased, proposed hard standing has been reduced to soften any potential visual impact, and the one dwelling would not appear cramped in comparison with two. The granting of planning permission for the application will also help the council achieve their housing land supply targets, with a new dwelling that can be built out and brought to the market in a timely fashion on a suitable parcel of land. It is therefore requested that the case officer's recommendation is upheld by the members of the committee and the permission is be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr McLeod. Members, I open it up to you. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. I do actually recall the application that we had previously regarding this particular site. I do think it's backland development, it's intrusive, is out of keeping really with the area. The area is already, I think you can see from there, fairly densely populated, but at the moment, people enjoy privacy. But if you add this one property to it, I think that the impact on a huge, well, a significant number of people will be quite significant. It's really a two-storey property that will, as I say, adversely impact on the neighbouring properties. It will damage, if you like, the existing residents' amenity value, their opportunity to enjoy the privacy of their gardens and the amenity value of their own properties. I don't believe that the current plan overcomes the inspector's objections and our objections to the previous application, and that really to provide the access road, we will be losing a significant number of trees in Cranly. And as has been pointed out, there is already significant flooding in this particular area. Okay, it drains away, but it's helped by trees, and I, I do believe that quite a significant number of trees will be lost, added to the, the problems we face in Cranly with the Cranly clay. And I do think that if you look at that access road, how narrow it is to get to that property, I just, I'm sorry, I think that this is an overdevelopment of a particularly small site that will have an improper, incorrect, unacceptable impact on too many other properties and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goodridge, then councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I remember this previous application on this site and also the site inspection that we had in connection with it. And could we perhaps look at the location pla, plan, please, rather than the block plan, if you've got it there? I think it was one, show it, that's better. Clearly, the, we do have to take due regard of the inspector's comments on the previous application, and looking at the bottom of page thirty-three, i- it makes it clear that the proposed houses, this is discussing the appeal, being located behind the houses facing Horsham Road would undermine the distinctive pattern of development of the housing along it. In other words, I don't like backland development, I think would be the paraphrasing of that. And then makes other comments. And if one looks at the location plan, you can see at least three other houses that would fall into the same predicament. Now, there's no precedent in planning, we're always told, but one can't help but thinking the three houses on Horsham Road to the north west could well do a similar development potentially. And so I'm a bit concerned about that. The Cranly Parish Council have raised various objections, and density and backland development are the two that, and overdevelopment of the area in height, scale, mass and bulk is a matter of personal opinion. Clearly, concerns about access, emergency vehicles, et cetera, are not matters that I would take note of, bearing in mind that the Highway Authority are in effect happy with the highway matters. And therefore, we are down to our personal views as to whether this single property overcomes the objections that the inspector raised at the important appeal decision that we have been referred to. And at the moment, I do feel on balance that this one house is actually too much. But could I ask a question? We've heard just now about that this council can now demonstrate a five-year housing land supply. On page thirty-five, it says, "The council is unable to demonstrate a five-year housing supply, and the provision of new market housing will assist in addressing the council's housing and land supply requirements. This is a material consideration to be weighed in favour of the development against other considerations of this application." Is this still correct, bearing in mind what we were told earlier?
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I, I mentioned in my introduction earlier that we, we are able now to demonstrate housing land supply. What's in the report, that was a verbal update to the committee on that point, so it's, it's only sort of just come around and been published of yesterday to today, so we're only be able to, rather than amend the report, it was a verbal update for you. The, the position is that that, that holds now less weight in terms of provision of housing, but provision of housing is still of benefit. It's, it would be marginal contribution in any case, so there is a benefit there, but it's not significant in overriding to over, to address significant harm which officers don't consider exist. So there's a benefit. As you rightly point out, what's set out in the report is slightly out of date now in terms of where we are in housing land supply, but officers don't think it alters their recommendation based on only a limited amount of benefit was, was given to the one house provision against the, the undersupply at the time of writing the report. Hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you, Peter. Are you okay with that, councillor Goodridge? Okay, thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I echo councillor Ellis's comments earlier. This is garden grabbing, it's backland development. The houses around the Horsham Road there, as you can see from the, from the location plan, the character of the area is detached houses with fairly large gardens, and we already have a development off of that road for a hundred and forty-nine houses currently being built by Cress Nicholson. Therefore, the need for provision of another single house in this area, bearing in mind that we have now got a five-year housing supply, I would think is probably, should have very little weight. Cranly already has thirteen hundred approximately houses approved for development, and I would therefore say that, again, that also gives less weight to the argument that there should be additional housing. Within the officer's report, it does state that this is not a brownfield site, it's not classed as previously developed land, it is a garden, and I believe the MPPF in paragraph fifty-three said we should resist inappropriate development of residential gardens, and I would say this is inappropriate development. I do echo councillor Burbridge from Cranly Parish Council's thoughts on the, the people around this area and the subjective nature of whether or not their amenity is harmed. It is a matter of judgment. I am aware of, of the actual area and aware of the people on the back of the, the property there in Cromwell Place, who will be overlooked in their garden. A particular house there which is going to be overlooked has got young children, and the garden on the back of their, their property, the overlooking windows from this property will not only overlook but will also provide quite a considerable amount of light pollution, you know, in the evening when they've got their, their lights on. If you look at the drawing of the property, if we could, could we go to the, the actual drawing of the back elevation? At the top there, the Juliet balconies obviously are considerable-sized windows looking across into Cromwell Place. I noted against the application that there was some conversation about having obscure glass, obscure glazing at the bottom of the Juliet balcony at some stage, although this was not accepted. I do think that that is an acknowledgement that there is an actual problem with overlooking, and I do think also about the point of having the additional trees three metres high, which is, you know, nearly ten foot high, is also an acknowledgement that there is overlooking from this property, and the effect on residents will be extremely harmful from what they currently enjoy, and their privacy will be affected. I would also say that it was talked about a necessity for intensification of building, and I would, would again point out to members that Cranly already has thirteen hundred new houses coming to it, and I don't, do not see the weight that an additional intensification of an additional house in this road is really a necessity. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, thank you to the officers for a very fine report, not, not being a, a Cranly person. It was, it was enormously useful to, to read the report and then take myself off for a walk around the, the environs. Thank you for that. So very informative, very clear. I'm hugely respectful of the local members' concerns, and it was, it was very useful to hear the, the public speakers give their, their take on this application. My thoughts on this matter are that it, it is a garden pla, plot, backland fill, it has history and history aplenty. Shoehorning what I, what is in effect a two-storey, four-bedroomed home with garaging into this corner of Cranly, to my mind, is out of character and at variance with Cranly's design statement, which I believe is a very important document. As we well know, Cranly's had more than its fair share of hits by developers, and the government's ever-demanding need for, for, for the more homes is, is tough. This one-off four-bedroom build does not, in my opinion, relate well to its surroundings. The design appearance doesn't cut the mustard, and the fact that it, that it can't be seen from the main road is totally immaterial. The impact and the neighbouring, on, on the neighbouring properties is immaterial consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Deeney.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try not repeat what my colleagues have said because I agree with virtually everything they have. I do remember the site visit some time ago, when we looked at the initial application, and I remember how wet and muddy we all got, and the rain hadn't been that hard, but it was very, very soggy. And I remember standing in that area and thinking, "How the hell are we going to squeeze two houses into this?" And looking at the plan, all we seem to have done is just slightly shrunk it and gone from two to one, but it's almost the same size. It's a, I think someone said eighty per cent, whether that's a correct estimation. But again, my argument would be that it's just far too big in that area. And I remember, and those who were here, we actually walked around the, the roads to look at what the impact would be, so some of us have actually seen the impact on some of these houses. So I totally agree with all of my colleagues, and I think our site visit from several months ago hasn't changed my view on this application, so I won't be supporting it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. When this came before us last, last time, I, I spoke up in terms of having concerns that it didn't conform with Cranly's design statement, which is a clear wish by the residents and carries weight in planning that it wasn't the kind of application they wanted. It increases the level... It increases the level of urbanisation of this particular area. Councillor Henry has already mentioned that point. And so, this particular application would have to overcome that concern for me, and I'm afraid it doesn't. And equally, it doesn't overcome the concern raised in the conclusion of the appeal judgment for me. This was a matter of judgment. I don't consider that the change in design satisfactorily overcomes the appeal inspector's concerns, and so for those reasons, I won't be supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with very many of the comments, and I'll not repeat them, which I'm sure you'll be delighted. Some backfield developments, even garden development, can be very useful, and I come to this with a fairly open mind. But having looked at it, and you look at the extent which they've got to go down to get access to this site, you look at the extent to which this site is overlooked, you look at the enclosed nature of the site in terms of living space, it seems to me that it's not a suitable site for putting that single house in an unobtrusive form. I do have great sympathy with the neighbours, I have great sympathy with those that say that it doesn't relate to its environment around there. I'm not so sure on, I don't know, Cranley as well as some of my colleagues do in terms of the flooding, but I think the more that we concrete over, the more problems we are going to get. And for those reasons, I don't see that this is, is clear in my mind as being a suitable location to put a single dwelling in a backfill situation. There are some, but this is not, in my view, one of them, and I won't be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do the officers wish to come back on? Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate all the comments being made. There's just a couple of points I will pick up on, just to assist. Paragraph sixteen to nineteen of the appeal decision on pages fifty-three and fifty-four of the agenda, actually, on balance concluded the impact on twenty-nine to thirty-one was found to be acceptable, and didn't find conflict with policy in terms of the impact on amenity. The scheme, or the proposed dwellings now further, slightly further from those properties, slightly reduced height and reduced number of windows, I think we've gone from three, sorry, from six down to three. So it's just to make a point, that was the conclusion of the inspector, feel that they have actually reduced that impact compared to the previous scheme. In terms of the impacts on the properties to the side, Grove Road, the scheme is now, or the proposed dwelling is now eight metres from the boundary. Just to clarify, the loss of outlook is not a reasonable reason to refuse an application. Need to be expressing overbearing impact and things like that. Again, they've used a sort of hip roof on that basis. Page thirty-seven talks through the specific changes on the agenda. And the last point I'd just add, just for clarity, is the housing land supply position is very important. I won't comment any more on the layout, but when it doesn't rule out inappropriate development coming forward, just because you've got housing land supply, it doesn't preclude more development coming forward, but it is a factor to take into account. But I just wanted to clarify that position. But we appreciate that the point we asked for judgement on is the impact on layout and amenity, but really regarding residential amenity rather than the visual layout of the area. I think the appeal decision is material and useful in that grounds, but accept the points regarding the layout and harm to the wider character of the area. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Members, any last questions before we move on to the recommendation? Okay. So the recommendation is that permission be granted subject to conditions one to nine and eleven to twelve set out on pages forty-four to forty-eight of the agenda, with an amendment to condition ten as set out on the update sheet, as well as informatives one to eleven on pages forty-eight and fifty. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's none, Chairman.
And those against?
That's nine, Chairman.
Any abstentions? Okay. So, thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is not agreed, it's rejected. May I have a proposal that permission not be granted? Proposal in second, proposed by councillor Ellis, and seconded by councillor Townsend. Now we need to look at the reasons that we would put forward for it to be not granted planning permission. Councillor Goodrich.
Well, I would have thought layout and character of the area, which is a matter of judgement, would be the main one. I think we need to look at the objections we came up with last time, and without diluting the effectiveness of them, because if you just put all the same ones and quite clearly things have changed, it weakens it. So, you know, by producing five or six reasons rather than two or three doesn't mean it is a stronger objection, as long as you've got, but it seems to me the main one should be the layout and character of the area.
Thank you. Any other suggestions? Sorry, councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it possible to have the loss of privacy for, and the effect on neighbouring amenity?
Okay, well, we'll go through, the officers can advise us on that. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you. That was actually going to be one of my suggestions, but also, I wonder whether we consider that this is overbearing in terms of bulk and mass of the building in relation to the existing properties. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ellis. Officers, oh, sorry, councillor Dinas.
Apologies, Chairman. I just wonder whether we can have overdevelopment of that particular area. It's overbearing, but it's actually overdevelopment as well.
Thank you. I see that, I've just been directed to page thirty-three, which is the reasons for the refusal of the previous application, and I think as councillor Goodrich said, I think they would form the basis, but obviously being updated to the current application rather than the past application. Officers, would you like to comment on those?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I was going to go to page thirty-three as well, so the reason for refusal one previously used was regarding layout, harm to the backland position. So I think that is appropriate based on your discussion. I know it refers to paragraphs of the MPPF, and, apologies, one of the members referred specifically to paragraph fifty-three, so I suggest we would include that. I think it's councillor Townsend, as well as seventeen and sixty-four of the MPPF. So, and we will add the appropriate design policies in the emerging draft local plan to that as well. The point I was trying to make, just in coming back to members, is the point of barring residential amenity and the overbearing impact. And my view is that, you know, you've set out your reasons, strong reasons, around that reason for refusal one and backed that up, but reason for refusal two, I think, given the reduced scale of the development, the set away from the boundaries of the properties, I think that is a lesser impact, and the inspector found some of that acceptable, and I think they've gone far enough to address the other matters which the inspector found harmful in terms of the overbearing impact with an eight-metre separation, a half-hipped roof design taken forward, and no side-facing windows. So that's a judgement for members, but my advice is that, or the officer's opinion is that reason for refusal one, yes, you've set that as reasoning out, but they have done quite a lot to address what was in reason for refusal two. So that's just my view to put to members, but reason for refusal two is set out there, and members can take a view on that wording, and I wouldn't suggest any significantly different wording other than reference to our additional policies if members do agree that's appropriate to apply. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Members, are you happy with those reasons which would be phrased correctly by the officers? Well, we've got reason one, and then you'll take the other points on board and put a reason two, really.
Sorry, Chairman, I was suggesting that, based on discussion, the reason for refusal should just be reason for refusal one, but asking members for their view on reason for refusal two, based on comments.
Councillor Dinas.
I'm a bit concerned about that, because if you look at reason two, it does talk about scale, bulk and mass of the proposed development, which I think, bearing in mind the size of the plot, and it's approximately eighty per cent of what the original one, I feel those issues are still important, so I would personally like them, and I'm sure my Cranley colleagues would support that.
Councillor Henry.
Yes, I'd just like to amplify the finestration, particularly on the back of the building. That is a worry, a concern.
Sorry.
Sorry, can I repeat myself? My concern is the finestration on the back of the new build.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
I'd just like to echo councillor Henry's on the finestration. Although the windows have reduced from six to three in the upper level, those are three full-length Juliet balcony windows, so the actual glazing, amount of glazing may not have actually reduced by that much, and I would like, I really feel quite strongly that that is still, is a cause of concern. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I think it was also mentioned that the height of this proposal was actually higher than the buildings proposed in the first application. I don't know whether we've got any measurements on that, but that would seem to reinforce the inclusion of reason number two to continue as a reason for refusal. I don't know. Tim, do you have those sort of figures to hand? While you're looking, councillor Gray.
I just wanted to come back from the comment that officers made about rejection two. It's eighty per cent of the original size, but the fifty per cent reduction in mass, so we've gone from one house to two, and I think we've got to be a bit careful there, especially taking the advice from Peter, that we perhaps focus our comments under two in the way that councillor Townsend had said in terms of the windows looks, the height of the building, and we craft that slightly differently so that we don't fall into that position and refer back to the previous inspector's comments and saying that it... I'll stop there. I think that's my point.
Thank you, councillor Gray. Peter, Tim, do you think that we can adapt reason number two to suit this, taking on board what the various members have concerns about?
Thank you, Chairman. I think on the basis of discussion, it's probably that we'd move towards proposed development, so I'm adapting number, reason two on page thirty-three, proposed development by reason of proximity to neighbouring boundaries, proposed finestration, and proposed finestration would result in a degree of overlooking and loss of privacy, and which would be material harmful to the amenities of neighbouring occupiers. So I would suggest taking some of that bulk and form out, given, but I'll be guarded by members. I think that captured the point.
I think if this building proposed is actually higher, the ridge height is actually higher than, I think height could still be retained in there, but obviously we'd take your advice.
Yes, I've given my position, but I'll accept that position, and, yeah, so proximity to neighbouring properties, proposed finestration and height would be material harmful to the neighbouring properties, and then continue with the rest of that reason for refusal.
Thank you, members. Are we happy with those two reasons? So the revised, yes, the revised recommendation proposed by councillor Ellis, seconded by councillor Townsend, is that permission be refused for the reasons that we have just discussed. Can I have all those in favour, please? Thank you. So that application is refused permission. But the next item is item B1, and before I move on to that, I'd just like to inform the members this will be Jennifer's last meeting at Easton, and I'd like to thank her for all her assistance over the last few years and her professionalism, and we will miss you. So, this is item B1. Erection of rear extensions and alterations, erection of front porch as amended by plans received on the second of the fifth, two thousand and seventeen, at six, Blackness cottages, Chittingfold Road, Dunstfold, GU eight four BP. Jennifer, would you like, for the last time, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. So the site is located to the north of Chittingfold Road. It comprises a two-storey semi-detached dwelling which has an existing single-story side extension. Got some photographs of the site to begin with. This is the two-story element of the front, sorry, of the front elevation with the single-story side extension, and then from the rear, here. And this is one of the outbuildings, and then just a photograph of the existing outbuildings on the site, which would be relocated following the proposal. This, I apologise, it's rather faint, is the proposed block plan. So the proposal seeks for a porch to be located on the front elevation here, and for a two-story rear extension here with a single-story element on the side, and then just an oil storage tank there, but I believe the oil storage tank is an existing tank on the site. These are the proposed elevations of the application. The porch here, shown on the front elevation, from the side, the two-story extension from the other side, including the single-story element, and then the two-story, and from the rear, with the single-story element. And these are the floor plans, so the ground floor on the left, with the porch and the extensions, and then the first floor, showing here. Turning to the determining issues, well firstly, I'll just turn you to the update sheet, apologies. We've not had any comments from the Surrey Wildlife Trust. However, as stated within the report, taking account of the submitted biodiversity checklist, we consider there wouldn't be harm to protected species, but recommend an informative be put on just in case species are found. And additionally, comments were received by the agent following the publication of the report. These are detailed in bullet points here, and they just respond to the parish council's concerns, and officers have provided a short response to those comments, but overall, they don't change our considerations and our support of the scheme. And then thirdly, I've just put on an additional formative there for the, reminding the applicant it's an offence to disturb protected species. So turning to the matters of principle and technical opinion, the site is located within the countryside beyond the Green Belt, wherein the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside shall be protected. Local Plan Policy RD two allows for proportionate extensions to the original dwelling in the countryside, and states that proportionate extensions would be no greater than forty per cent of the original floor space of the dwelling. However importantly, we also have to make an assessment on the form, bulk and height of the proposed extensions when considering their proportionality. In terms of flooding, it's only the very northern tip of the site, which is actually within flood zones two and three, so the proposed extension and the actual dwelling is far removed from that, so we don't consider there would be any impacts on flooding. And again, the same in terms of ancient woodland, the ancient woodland is at the far northern part of the site, so we don't consider there'd be any harm in that respect. Turning to the matters of judgement for councillors this evening, as stated previously, Policy RD two considers extensions that are greater than forty per cent to be disproportionate. On this application, the extensions total thirty-nine point nine per cent, so they do fall within the criteria of Policy RD two. And visually, in terms of the form, bulk and height of the extensions, officers consider that they are subservient to the existing dwelling, and given their overall scale and bulk and mass, they would be proportionate. In terms of the design and the impact on the visual amenity, the proposed extensions would be constructed of materials to match the host dwelling. The rear extensions wouldn't be visible from the street scene, so officers consider they wouldn't affect the balance of the cottages, and therefore consider that it wouldn't be harmful... of the cottages, and therefore consider that it wouldn't be harmful to the visual amenity. And officers also consider there wouldn't be any harm to the residential amenities of the neighbouring dwelling, as highlighted within the report. So overall, officers recommend that permission be granted, subject to the conditions on pages sixty-eight to sixty-nine of the agenda, and to include informative two on the update sheet. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Jennifer. Members, councillor Gray.
Thank you mister chairman. I'd like to also thank Jennifer, and thank her for the report, I am familiar with the area, and I don't know whether that makes it easier or harder to go through an officer's report, probably harder, because I have to look at it more carefully, and move aside any prejudice I might have. I do recognise that we have had submissions since the parish council made their comments, and I think some of those, some of those issues have improved the situation. We have two applications for significant extensions to two separate pairs of semi-detached former workers' homes outside of the main settlement boundary in the village of Dunstfold. The houses themselves are visible from the main Chittingfold road, but not only that, the street scene is one aspect, but there are a lot of areas around where these houses are actually visible from, basically footpaths from other houses in there. The application is at the end of the four houses, and with a very wide plot, and I think that's accepted, that's a plot that originally had planning rejected for nineteen houses, so it must be a significant area. Parking is very limited here, there are two difficult to access off-road spaces dug into the bank, I can speak from experience, because I went this afternoon to look at that very specifically, it is a very narrow road, a bridle way, there is traffic along that road, because it goes past there to access other properties and other land up there, it's used by farmers and others, and cars cannot park on the road. The road has, in front, does flood in the winter, the lower area is further down quite extensively, but the road itself also floods. Turning to the actual design, the porch there is, I think as the parish council says, it's out of keeping with the style and size of the village's design statement, and also in terms of the neighbours' houses. The parish council represents strongly the local feelings about this and other inappropriate extensions to the village's traditional small workers' cottages, which are integral to the village character. I think as Jennifer said, it was interesting, because I originally wrote down this is forty per cent, but that would be doing it an injustice, it's thirty-nine point nine per cent to one decimal point, so I haven't gone to check what it would be with more than one decimal point. It's very close to the guideline. As I've said, the street scene's only one aspect of this, this is not just something that you view from the front, it is got an all-round viewing from the neighbourhood area. We don't have a broader locality map in there, so I could demonstrate it, but it basically is in an area where you've got some properties that actually overlook the area, you've got the bridle way itself, so I think we've got to take account of that. If the council is minded to approve this, the two points in here is that we certainly would, the parish council would like to see a restriction on the working hours brought into this. It is particularly important to a small village, it's particularly important to neighbours in terms of the amenities. The other thing is that, I'm not sure whether we can do this, but because of the site nature, I think we should introduce a condition that goes something to the effect that the applicant should submit a construction plan, showing the site access and storing, a storage for materials, demonstrating that they won't be blocking the single-track road and inconveniencing other bridle, it's got to be, there's got to be a construction plan that's practical. I'll stop there mister chairman, if you were, with your indulgence, I may want to come back after other councillors have spoken.
Thank you councillor Gray, anybody else? Nobody else, yes councillor Townsend, and then councillor Henry.
I just wondered whether or not there are, in the application, any indication of the materials that are going to be used, other than for the porch?
Officers, to match existing I would imagine.
Thank you chairman, the application form states that the roof would be red brown clay tiles to match the existing, the walls would be red clay facing brick to match the existing, and windows would also match existing, so it's just using existing materials to match in. Thank you.
Councillor Henry.
Thank you chairman. One of my concerns is the loss of a two-bedroomed property, we've been, it's been something that's been a bugbear for a long time, particularly with people that live in villages, but it's something that we have to live with, because people have different expectations from what they had decorated or two ago. But I did want to flag that up, I'm not very fond of the new proposed porch design, it does look like a big cart horse on the front of the house, doesn't it? I don't know whether we can do something to improve that. I certainly concur with councillor Gray's additional conditions with regard to the construction plan, and I think that's all I've got in my head at the moment, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goodridge.
Thank you mister chairman, I mean, I listen with interest to what councillor Gray had to say, because he clearly knows the area better than I do, and I note what the parish council had to say about the application. So far as I'm aware, there's, you know, there's no, there's no planning reason to preserve two-bedroom houses as two-bedroom houses, instead we, we, and I know that's not being said by the parish council, but Policy RD two does indicate that it's accepted that small houses may well need to increase in the rural area, to take into account what councillor Henry said, that expectations are now, you know, are more than they were when they were workers' cottages. This comes within our RD two, just, and I, from the street itself, it won't be seen, I accept that it may be from a bridle path, you may be able to see it, it's a big plot, and I think some care has been taken to ensure that the other half of the pair are not going to be inconvenienced, I note that they are not objecting to this application, nor does anybody else objecting to this application in the street or elsewhere. And therefore, on balance, I feel that I wish to support the officers' recommendations. I note that somewhere in the report, it does say that to put on a condition about when the application will be built, or the hours that it will be built, is not something which the officers feel would be something they could support, but perhaps we could discuss that further. But I accept the porch looks a bit, bit, bit of, it's a matter of judgment, isn't it, as to whether this, it's open at the side, so its bulk isn't quite as bad as it might otherwise be, maybe a bit pretentious, but why not? I mean, I, on balance, I think it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodridge, I have to say that I do tend to agree with you, I think a similar porch could probably be built under permitted development anyway, so I don't think we've got much say about that. Policy RD two, as you say, that was, you know, that was included in the previous local plan to restrict small cottages becoming five-bedroom mansions, and to keep them sensible in how far we extend them, and as far as I can see, and I've looked at the plans online as well, everything they've done with the extension is in accordance with the supplementary planning guidance that we give to people for extending their homes, so I tend to agree with you that I would be supporting this. Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you chairman, having looked at this beforehand, I, my inclination was to support officers' recommendation, it always worries me when we hear that the local residents have concerns about it, however, I think the arguments made in the submission make the case. The one point I would pick up on is one that councillor Gray mentioned, and that is just the adequacy of the parking provision, I think we have the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, and the letter of the law, this probably just about complies, I think the point's been made, that it'd be a real challenge to actually use the available parking space in an adequate manner, and I wonder whether, if we're minded to support this application, whether a condition could be made strengthening the requirement to address the parking such that it can adequately cope with the additional parking requirements under the extension, rather than just nominally cope with it because of the narrowness of the access road. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Pyeam.
Just like to comment on with regard to the increase in one bedroom, times have changed, I haven't noted what, when this property was built, but the law has changed, the expectations of families and the space for children to be able to study in their rooms etc has changed dramatically, of course the law has changed with regard to mixed sexes within rooms, we, perhaps a hundred years ago, it was five to a room and didn't matter, today we have much better rules, understanding for what families need, and I think, we could always argue as to whether we should have extensions to the back or whatever, looking at the drawings, the front scene looks identical except of course for the, for the new porch, and that happens all the way round this borough, and I think it's a reasonable application. I wondered originally why such a large site with only had one house, but of course then we heard there was a problem of flooding at one end of the, end of the land, or possible flooding, and therefore it seems a very reasonable application to me.
Thank you, councillor Gray, would you like to come back?
Thank you, come back on one point, and that is objections, I think there are particular reasons why none of the neighbours have objected here, I would ask you to take account of the parish council, they've consulted extensively with the villagers as a whole in terms of what they, what they wanted, I do take the point about people's families growing, and I think it's very valid, maybe it's not so much valid in some cases where people buy houses knowing that they're small, and then come and disappointed when they can't turn them into five-bedrooms houses, there is one house in Dunstfold which is called the Little House, and it's probably the largest house in Dunstfold with all the extensions that have been made, the Little House, Knightons Lane, if anyone wants to refer back to it in the planning consents. I've heard what other councillors said, I still feel that the, from the local point of view, that the porch is, is difficult, it's out of keeping, I mean, it's not so much, I think, a planning issue, but to the applicants, how will it look, how will it balance to others, and I think that's when people do modify these houses, they have to look, look at that, and they have to look at what they've, what they've built, and that's really all I want to say on this.
Thank you, officers, we've had, yeah, we've had some suggestions of additional conditions, working hours, construction plan, and also coping with the parking, would you like to comment on those?
Thank you chairman, just on the point regarding working hours, we often use that on bigger schemes, or schemes that are constrained in terms of town centres or village centres where you've got a lot of properties around, but this is in effect quite a small-scale development, small-scale extension, often, you know, that, not definitely, but that's quite often done by either the residents that live there, so they do that in their spare time as well, so quite often applying a working hours condition to a residential extension is a bit disproportionate to the form of level of development taking place. Separately outside planning, environmental health have noise abatement legislation, and they can control that if there's a nuisance, so there's separate legislation to deal with that, so I, officers wouldn't necessarily, we haven't put it forward and wouldn't necessarily support that. In terms of construction management plan, note the comments about the lane, and I think that would be appropriate if members felt it necessary, and that could pick up the requirement for contractor parking and things like that, because as you say, you've got a large plot and a large area there to deal with, storage of materials, so that could address both the parking and the storage of materials point, so hopefully that's helpful, and we can add a relatively standard type condition, requiring specifically parking of vehicles, delivery hours, and the storage of materials, apologies, yes, thank you chairman.
Councillor Gray.
Could I just come back on one thing that was said, talking about restricting hours, more for larger sites and in towns, villages are quiet places, this is a very narrow lane, it's quite a close proximity with the neighbours, and this is a general issue that somewhere like Dunstfold has, because most of the developments are fairly small, there's been another one recently with a very similar situation that was approved next to the shop, already there's been over sixty deliveries to that particular area for an extension, so I don't underestimate the impact of that, but if you're minded to agree, a construction plan, could we not put some, some comments in there that normal working hours, that would go some way to recognise the local concerns? Thank you for letting me come back again, again.
Peter, did you wish to comment?
Thank you chairman, maybe appropriate, we've got the constructions or code of practice, which the environmental health team use a lot, and refer to people too, and we'll apply an informative and advise them of that, and that gives good guidance on appropriate working practices and things like that, so that may be helpful. Thank you chairman.
Thank you, any further comments members? So if we move on to the recommendation that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to three, and informative one on pages sixty-eight to sixty-nine of the agenda, as well as additional informative two as set out on the update sheet, and an additional condition regarding the construction plan which includes use of the parking spaces etc as recently discussed, may I have those in favour of the recommendation to, sorry? I'd mention the extra informative? Ah, sorry, okay, we've had yet an additional, additional informative, okay, thank you. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's unanimous chairman.
Thank you. Thank you members, the recommendation to grant is agreed. We now move on to a very similar application, next door but one, this is item B2 WA 2017 zero six one five, erection of single-story side extension following demolition of existing carport at four Blackness cottages, Chittingfold Road, Dunstfold, GU eight four BP, and I won't call you Flo Tim, I'll ask Tim to introduce the application to the committee please.
Thank you chairman. The members as outlined, this is number four Blackness cottages, so two doors down from the application you just considered, application site outlined in red, it is a semi-detached two-story property. The proposal is for the demolition of existing carport to the northeast, northeast elevation of the dwelling, an erection of a single-story pitch roof extension on the northeast elevation, and also erection of a new front porch. This is the proposed ground floor plan, the proposal will come out to the side here and beyond the rear elevation of the property, proposal would provide an additional bedroom at ground floor level to the dwelling, and an open plan kitchen dining area. The proposed porch would be an enclosed porch, coming off the front here with a... The proposed porch would be an enclosed porch, coming off the front here with a hit roof. That's the proposed elevations of the application. So the front porch here, the external materials would be exposed brick and tiles to match the existing dwelling. You see here, the design would be of the extension, would be a hit roof design coming in, with the ridge adjoining the dwelling here. And then at the back, you can see another hit roof coming in here, so there'll be a valley in between there and the existing dwelling. The proposal includes a set of rear-facing full-glaze length doors and high-level rooflight Here's some site photographs, so the existing dwelling is similar in appearance, obviously, to the one just considered. The application porch would be here, and the proposal would remove this lean-to carport here and extend out here. So looking at the back, the extension would come about three metres beyond the rear elevation of the existing dwelling, up the side here. You can note the existing neighbouring property over here. This is the adjoining neighbouring property, so you'll see they have a single-storey side addition to that dwelling. So this is the application site here, so it is slightly smaller, but from the front, visually, it would look quite similar. This is a neighbouring property, just show you the slight difference in ground levels between the application site and the neighbouring property here. You'll note there's no objections from the adjoining neighbours. In terms of the determining issue of this application, as per the scheme just determined, the impact on the countryside beyond the green belt, visual amenity, landscape character, residential amenity are for consideration. You will note in the report that the proposed extension does go beyond the guideline of 40% on the policy RD2. However, the 40% is a guideline, and each application to be considered on its own merits. And taking into account the scale and form of the proposal, along with some existing development in the road, officers are satisfied the proposal can be supported. So the recommendation is permission to be granted. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Tim. Members, I open it up to you. councillor Gray.
Thank you, chairman. This is the second application for the same area. It's a significant extension on one of a pair of semi-detached house, former workers' Appreciate that families grow, but this is a downstairs development, it doesn't quite in the same category as the other one. Go back to my point, these houses are visible from all around the area, it's not just the street scene. This application is very significant in size, it's 54.1% to one decimal point against the guideline of 40%. So it's 14 percentage points higher than the guideline. And I think that's significant here, because it extends approximately 50%, over 50%, the length of the house, and it goes about 50% of the depth. I couldn't read all the numbers, so you must forgive me if I've slightly misrepresented that. But it's a significant extension sideways and backwards. The other application we were looking at, the 40% was over two stories, this is a 54% on one story. It is out of keeping, there's a strong objection from the parish council. I think we've got to try, although we've got to accept the point of growth that councillor Bayon mentioned previously, but we've also got to protect the whole area from an overdevelopment point of view. In the view of the local parish council, and in fact, in my view in this case, it is too large, it extends the street scene out of proportion to the old workers' cottages, it extends the depth, it extends the width of it by too much, it makes the pair of semis unbalanced, and I accept the picture of the next door. I wish we'd also had some pictures of actually the road in front of it and the setting of it, because this gives the impression it's high. In fact, the road is quite a bit lower in terms of, as it goes along there and further along on that particular road. I don't think it's the appropriate size of development for the old part of the village in an area of AGLV. It will impact on the intrinsic beauty of the countryside. I don't think in the officer's report perhaps we give enough weight to policy C2. And yet again, we've got this porch, it's a porch epidemic. There are a lot of houses in the village that have porches. A lot of the smaller houses have porches, for good reason, for storm, for other reasons, and not against porches. But then I think it's a question of making those that fit in. And we talk about the design statement, and the design statement seems, and according to the parish council's comments and feedback, has little weight from planners. But certainly, it would be much better if some of these porches and additions were in keeping with the village. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just wanted to comment on policy RD2, because policy RD2 says, as I understand it, a proposal which individually or cumulatively increases the floor space of the original dwelling by more than 40% will unlikely be considered proportionate. Bad English, but in other words, there's a presumption against this being proportionate if it's more than 40%. And for years, we've been sort of totting up extensions and the cumulative effect, and does it below or above 40? And this is 54, which does seem to me quite a large amount over the presumption. Now, I accept that in this case, a side development which will be seen from the street would seem to be appropriate when one looks at what the other half has done. And if this application was for a similar size as the other half of the matching pair, then I think it would be one that wouldn't concern me one bit, rather than having development at the back as we did further down the road. So, subject to what other people have to say, I am at the moment slightly uncomfortable that it's going by 54%, because it seems to flout, to me, subject to what officers may add in, it does seem to me a breach of policy RD2, not marginally, but quite significantly. So the principle of development, no problem, the extension, but the size, I have my worries.
Thank you. councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to start with asking the officers a question about the status of the carport in planning law. Is that a planned carport that is actually occupying space and therefore would impact on the extension calculation, or is it just a freelance offering?
Thank you, chairman. It's not included as part of the calculation in terms of the floor space, it's not habitable floor space, it's just, as I say, a lean-to type carport. Thank you, chairman.
Right, if I may continue, then in which case my views rather echo those of councillor Goodrich. The principle of development seems reasonable as long as it's in keeping, but this does seem to be a little on the excessive size. The other point I'd make echoes the point I made during the previous submission, and that's in relation to parking, again, the question of letter of the law and spirit of the law. If you look at the adjacent property number three, there's width, adequate width there to shuffle cars about. At property number four, it's pretty narrow, and once one car's in, it's wedged in, and they'd have to go through considerable contortions to get the car nearest the house out if there were three cars parked there. So if we were minded to approve this, I'd be very concerned about approving it without requiring something done to the parking provisions, such that you can actually move cars out onto the narrow road at the end, without causing a huge amount of chaos. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Looking at the policy RD2 as well, this is an increase of 14% over the guideline of 40. So it's 14% over that guideline, and I just think that, to be honest, it is flouting the rules slightly, the guidelines on that. And also, perhaps this isn't a real planning reason, but I do think that the street scene on that particular extension is not particularly attractive. I know that it mirrors the one next door, but I do think that this is an area of AGLV. It's obviously an area where lots of people walk, and it's a bridle path, and you can't park on the road, I don't believe. And I do think that the street scene should perhaps be taken a little bit more into consideration on the front of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, I tend to agree with you. By my calculations, that 14 extra percent is something like 30, over 30% of the 40%, if you see what I mean, which seems... councillor Gray, you'd like to come back?
It's 14 percentage points, which is 35%. You were spot on.
Any further comments, members? Right, so the recommendation is, oh, sorry, officers, would you like to comment on any of the comments?
Thank you, chairman. A lot of comments have been around that 40% rule, and this has been, as you say, it's been around for a long time, fairly old local plan, and it's been tested at appeal a lot. In terms of the 40% rule, applying it hard and fast, the council tried to do that over time since the application of the MPBF, particularly in the countryside, and it's been particularly unsuccessful in defending that, in just taking that hard line about 40%. The inspectors are concluding on matters of judgment on design, so if it's purely the 40% and exceeding that, the concern is, as I say, we haven't been successful in that, we need to frame it round if you think the design is inappropriate to the character and appearance of the dwelling, or harmful visually to the countryside. I think that's, a lot of the appeal decisions draw on that conclusion. So it's quite important that we take into account that as a material consideration, and it's appropriate in the green belt very much, and it's very much supported at appeal, but we're just countryside here, it has a lower protection than the green belt in terms of the strength of policy to protect that. There's a point about parking, the photo isn't up on screen, but showed both properties, they've got a relatively long driveway, it's a quiet little lane, it's one property, it would allow for two or three, maybe almost four, cars to be parked on that driveway, and reversing out onto that is not going to cause a significant concern, given the level of usage. And the county highway authority haven't raised an objection on those grounds. So I appreciate that there's a manoeuvring issue, and there might be an inconvenience to people that live at the property, but I can't see that and amount that to a highway safety concern. So I think that's important to note. I think that's all the points to pick up on, and I don't know if Tim, is that good? Thank you, chairman.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, members, it's really, because I know obviously we just dealt with the previous application, this is on the 40% guideline, and actually, the percentages increase and how we got this on this particular application. The previous application you saw had an existing side section, that had to be counted as part of the original, because we had no planning history for it, and the benefit of the doubt goes to the applicant. So that's just to make you aware, hence a two-story extension for that one was within the 40%, even though it's proposing ground and first floor. The starting point with this particular property is obviously what's there, which doesn't have that existing side section as the one, two doors up did. So that just helps give you an indication as to why the percentage increase is actually quite different between them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. councillor Dinas, and then councillor Gray.
Thank you, chair. Like has been mentioned, the actual percentage, I think, is neither here nor there, it's a good indication, but it's not what would make my decision. What would, would be the overbearing, the bulk, the appearance, the fact everything's on the ground floor. So I accept the comments made about previous extensions, what has and what hasn't, but that is a huge extension on the ground floor, so it would be about the overbearing bulk and appearance, not the percentage. Thank you, chair.
Thank you. councillor Gray.
Thank you. If I just come back on the highways, I mean, my understanding is highways don't go out to this sort of thing as they look at it. The traffic in there will vary day to day, but I'm well aware that there's a fair number of farmers, farm vehicles going up and down that, especially if there's livestock up onto the fields, and certainly at periods like lambing and otherwise. So I think we've got to be careful we dismiss this as being one car every five hours, it's not, it can be busier than that. It is a very narrow lane, that's the point I make. But I think my, to the committee, the big issue here is, if it was two stories at 54%, I might have a slightly different view. The other one was actually giving an amenity, and I understand, but I understand the policy, it's to protect from overdevelopment. This is not a green belt, and I'm sorry that we don't share the status of other parts of the borough, along with Cranley, we have this problem. It is AGLV, it is in the countryside in that respect, it is outside of the village settlement boundary. I think there's good reasons to look at this one quite severely, and that's all I would ask the committee to do. I won't be supporting it, but I understand that other members may have different views.
Thank you. councillor Ellis.
Thank you, chairman. Sorry to go back to the 40% rule. I do recall in the past, we've argued very fiercely against 1%, 2%, 3% increase outside of the 40% rule, and perhaps that's what's led us to be unsuccessful. I do think this, it's hugely, very significantly outside of that rule, and I do think, as has been very well said, this is all on one floor, it's a very large extension. I feel that it's out of keeping with the type of property, and taking into consideration the area of AGLV and outside of the village settlement area, these are policies that we shouldn't ignore. And so therefore, I'm sorry, I can't support the officers.
Thank you. councillor Henry.
Thank you, chairman. It's been good to hear the debate, because it really brings to life the application. And of course, we can't have our fingers in all the pies and know the whole of our area in its entirety, so I've welcomed the debate we've had this evening. It has given great insight into this particular application, and that row cottages for that matter. I do have a concern with regard to the design and appearance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments before we move to the recommendation? So the recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to two, and informatives one to two on pages 83 to 84 of the agenda. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's none, chairman.
And those against?
That's eight, chairman.
And those abstaining?
One, chairman.
Thank you. The recommendation to grant is rejected, so may I have a proposal that we refuse permission? councillor Gray and a second, please. councillor Dinas. Right, so we turn to reasons for refusal.
I think the first reason is the size and scale, the RD, I said RD2, the 40% rule, but not just the 40%, but it's the imbalance of it. It's the fact is, if it was 45%, and go back to councillor Ellis's point, we're not here arguing about marginal difference, we're also not marching about, like the other property... arguing about marginal difference, we're also not margining about, like the other property, where I think it was slightly different. I think if this was re-looked at, we might take a different view. So it's that policy and the extent to which it's over. That would be my first one.
I think that's probably the only reason that we'd have, is it, officers? Well, yes.
Thank you, Chairman. During the debate, I've drafted a suggested reason, so maybe I'll read that and see what members think. The proposed extension by reason of its bulk, design, scale, sighting and appearance would result in harm to the character and appearance of the existing dwelling and wider countryside. Proposal would therefore conflict with policies D1, D4, C2 and RD2 of the local plan, and paragraph 17 of the MPPF. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes. Right, so the revised recommendation is that permission be refused proposed by councillor Gray and seconded by councillor Deeney for the reason that we have just heard. All those in favour?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you, members. So the recommendation to refuse is agreed. There are no items to consider in the exempt section, so that concludes this meeting for this evening. Thank you very much.